Hello, everybody out there. Hello, this is Jaquez Muhammad. So before we start, we want to definitely just welcome you to the Lappa TV Channel 190 Comcast Debate 2020. On behalf of Lappa TV Executive Board and all the wonderful TV producers and community, again, we welcome you all. I'm your moderator today, Jaquez Muhammad, but I've also got another moderator, Yolanda Muhammad, who's also going to be moderating today. So now, as just like Judge Gino says, let's get to the legal source. All right, the rules and format of Lappa TV Debates 2020. First, Lappa does not endorse, oppose, or support candidates or political parties. It is the intention of this candidate debate slash forum to provide an opportunity for candidates to provide their views on important issues facing Newcastle County citizens and to create more transparency in the political process. This is truly a voter information PSA. So now we got to that. If you're on this right now and you're watching this, we do have some rules and regulations that we got to get into, some more legal source. Recording and broadcasting of this debate. Candidates are not allowed to use or edit the recording for campaign purposes. Lappa TV and any co-sponsors are considered the owners of any recording of this debate. Any use of the recording requires approval of Lappa TV with the caveat that it must be broadcast in its entirety. The recording can be posted, written, or streaming, or audio video, a Lappa TV website, or another website if approved by Lappa TV. It can be broken into segments as long as all segments are available. The candidates and audience members are also not allowed to record the debate. At this time, I would like to recognize some great shows on Lappa TV like In the Upper Room, The Bottom Line, Enjoy the Journey, Showtime with Omar, Real Talk with Yolanda, Out and About with Josie Roy, Britain Ham and Friends, and of course, The Hard Talk with Jaquez. That's just to name a few that you can watch on Lappa TV. We would also like to acknowledge our friends at the Civic League for Newcastle County. Thank you to all those people at the Civic League of Newcastle County. Now, we do have one more thing for the legal source. A lot of people have called up and a lot of people have written to us and said, "What does Lappa stand for?" Well, let me give it to you, Least Access Preservation Association. That was the people that were on Channel 28 for over 30 something years. The mission of Least Access Producers and Preservation Association is to preserve and secure access to live, least-access television, programming for the citizens of Wilmington and Delaware. In this spirit, along with your support, that will continue to pursue, we will continue to pursue that platform that we have grown to love and trust over the years. All right, now that we've gotten over those legal sources, that was a mouthful, I have to give you our legal source again for the Lappa TV debate. Our goal is to keep it simple, so we'll be running a tight ship. Topics for the candidates will include land use and zoning, budget, infrastructure, building codes, ethics, community service relations, and many more different topics. No charts or other visual aids are permitted during the debate. Campaign signage is permitted. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Absolutely no profanity, vulgar, or abusive language. Each candidate will have four minutes for opening and closing statement. The moderators will initiate each segment by asking the question, and then each candidate will have two minutes to answer. All right, so now that we've gotten into the legal source, let me introduce our timekeeper and our other co-host, Yolanda Muhammad. How you doing, Yolanda?
I'm doing well.
All right, so we just want each candidate, we just want each candidate to understand that there is like a two-second delay because we're in this COVID-19 and we have to do this through Zoom. Anything else, co-host?
Yes, I wanted to say that we kind of lost one of our panelists, Monique Johns, for a moment. It looks as though she had some technical difficulty. So I'm going to try to reach out and see if we can get her back, but otherwise, we're going to proceed.
All right, so that's great. That's a great thing, too. Hopefully, we get her back in. Now, if we do go into some difficulty candidates, and Zoom has already assured us that they'll try to get it back in in seconds. So if you're having some connectivity difficulties, you will be back, we'll be back in. So let's just introduce the candidates that we have tonight. All right. So first off, we have Mr. Brian Whitaker. Wait, Brian.
Hello.
All right, the second off, we have the Newcastle County Council President, Karen Hartley-Nagle. Wait. And next, we have Monique Johns. I think she's trying to get back on, so we'll go right back to Monique. And last but not least, Mr. Cyril Poperty.
Good evening.
All right, thank you, Cyril. All right, so we're going to start with our first question. And we had a lot of questions online from this, so I really have to get with this. And we already picked before who was going to go first, so Brian, you're going to lead us off. Brian, the first question that we have for you and all the other panelists is where do you stand on the county government ethics and how would you improve the work that they're doing?
Well, when I, when it comes to ethics in county government and the work that is approved, what I would simply do is to bring each situation to the ethics officer for the ethics officer to review, get an ethics opinion, and then take the opinion to the council and have a public discussion for public interest.
Oh, hold on for it. That was fantastic, Brian. My co-host just told me that I went out of order. So I'm going to pat myself and beat myself up. She said I got to do everybody's opening. So Brian, since you're the first one on openings, you've got the next three minutes.
Do you want me to do the opening right now?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Hello, my name is Brian Whitaker. I am the candidate of choice. I am with the Independent Party of Delaware. The opening is, is that one, that I graduated from Wilmington College with my degree in behavioral science to I graduate with my master's in human services. I work with people who have special needs and who are severely mentally ill. Second, thirdly, that I am a United States veteran. I proudly served in Iraq and I came back. Throughout my journey in the civilian world, I was appointed by Governor Merkel to be a part of the Board of Oriology Speciality United Distancery. And lastly, that I reached out to 788 voters as an independent in the city of Newcastle as a city clerk. And I have been well versed in municipal and local government. I went to many conferences and association meetings to understand how law applies to local government and ethics. And I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak at this primary debate for the Democrats, and I'm a candidate of choice.
All right, thank you, Brian. You're well under the four minutes. Thank you so much. All right, so the next person that we have that been pulled out is County Council President Karen Hartley-Nagle. And timekeeper, is she on? Karen?
No, hold on. Okay. Karen, you're unmuted now, and you may do your opening. Start.
Good evening, and again, my name is Karen Hartley-Nagle. I'm the current president of Newcastle County Council. I am a mom of four grown children, age 21 to 30, and I am a now a grandmother, which I just love. And so I have been serving for three and a half years and loved every minute of it. I got into this position and won in order to help people, and that's what I do every day. I do it, work at this job seven days a week, from morning to night, weekends, holidays. I have all my calls, as soon as I get elected, forwarded to my cellphone, so you can reach me anytime. And probably my favorite part of the job is helping constituents, and I do a lot of it. This primary election is incredibly important for many reasons. And experience matters. We're experiencing a time right now of unprecedented change. In our county today, we see and feel the results of a global pandemic, protests, economic upheaval, a drug epidemic, homelessness, and violence in our communities that affects some areas of our county. Jaquez, as you know, here in this county, in this area for the 16, more than others, as well as the city of Wilmington. This primary election is going to be life-changing for many people because how we move forward and with someone who is willing to take positions, take the lead, and not be afraid of what the county executive is doing or what other elected officials are doing, but looking at the community connecting with people, listening to them, and then making decisions and moving forward with things that matter to them, not just the most popular thing, but thoughtful positions. I had begun forwarding my office phone to my cellphone right away and taking calls because we know problems don't usually happen when it's convenient for us. It usually happens in the middle of the night or weekends. And it doesn't matter for me whether it's a county issue or not. And so I answer so people don't get the runaround with me and they're not frustrated or have to go to more to one place or another person to call. I tell them I can fix everything, but I will promise I will try. And I do. I'm patient and I persevere, and I do pretty well in addressing almost every issue and getting it fixed or at least to a place where everybody is fairly happy. For the last five months, it's been nonstop with helping constituents with every kind of issue. And okay, I don't see it slowing down anytime soon. As I said when I was running for this office, I diligently involved myself in the budget process each year, going through it, working with it. I have a couple advisors who are experts in this, in finance and in the economics, and they also help. I voted against any unnecessary tax increases, which were two years in a row in the county. Put in one year, but it took effect over a two-year period. For Matt and I ran against, both of us ran against higher taxes. And I feel we did not need to increase the taxes, and there was other reasons that I voted against it, areas where we needed to comply with the law, where we did, where we were not. And when I had spoken to Mr. Meyer about it, he moved forward anyway instead of addressing it. I fought for transparency, and we are seeing that with the streaming of our meetings. That was to happen when the pandemic began. And again, and we will start it as soon as the council reopens. Meanwhile, our office has not missed a beat with service during the coronavirus pandemic, and community involvement has increased. I fought for the apprenticeship program, more transparency on the airport, against the Delaware Board of Trade, stock swap, poor economic and social justice, for more diversity, public health initiatives for jobs for safe communities, for smart growth and many quality of life issues, better parks and libraries, scrutinizing county finances for transparency and accountability for seniors and more. I look forward to your questions and having a great debate.
All right, thank you. Yolanda? Yolanda, it seems like we got Monique back. Can you hear me, Yolanda?
Yes, I can. I can hear you, and Monique is in and is right on time. It's up to you now. You got four minutes.
Before she does that, do we have any people in the waiting room?
I don't see anyone waiting. Everyone should be getting in.
All right.
Because we're going to go through and we're about to lock up this meeting.
All right, so if you're not in by this time, it's too late.
I think I have a few more people that are coming, too.
Okay, well, let them come in. You just keep going, and if they don't make it, we're sorry, but we're just going to try to keep moving.
All right, so you came in at the perfect time, Monique. You have four minutes for your opening statement.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Monique Johns, and I got involved in politics for one simple reason and one reason only, is to better service my community. In times like these, like this, we need elected officials that will have a mindset of a servant leader. I have spent most of my life serving people, growing up as a minister's daughter in Claymont. My parents taught me the value and commitment that it takes to make families strong. So if you don't know anything about me, let me tell you, I've been married for 24 years to Dr. Tim, and I have four beautiful children who we have instilled these same values. I believe strong families make strong communities. If we want to see change in our communities, we must get involved. We no longer can sit back and hope things will get better. We must take action. The George Floyd public lynching has strengthened my resolve. I am running for Newcastle County Council President because to be the voice of the people, oftentimes, the people who need the help the most are not being heard. Being a good leader is being a good listener. When I'm elected, I make one promise, that is, the people's interests will be my interests. The definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. Newcastle County challenges will be solved by the people who have created these problems in the first place. The choice is clear. You can vote for people who were entrusted with these positions before to maintain a status quo, and no major change will come to plight, to plight of people who the country has a responsibility to serve. Or you can give me a chance, and I will be the change that is needed for the country and a county to become a more progressive county than actually serves its people with respect, dignity that they deserve. I will be the voice of the voiceless. I will be the beacon of hope for those who have given up on their governments because no one listens to them anymore. And I will be the change our county so deservedly needs. I'm Monique Johns, your next Newcastle County Council President.
All right, thank you. All right, that was Monique Johns. Next, we have Mr. Cyril Poperty. Cyril, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
All right, your four minutes start now.
Well, again, good evening. My name is Cyril Poperty, and I'm going to start off with four big thank yous. First of all, I want to thank Lappa for holding this debate tonight. I want to thank our heroes over the past few months in the midst of this pandemic. I'm thanking you nurses, the medical community, our paramedics, those on the front line, day in and day out, and our restaurateurs who through this pandemic kept us fed. As for me, I did my part. Early on, I volunteered with the Army Delaware National Guard and served the better part of three months, day in, day out, with the National Guard fighting COVID. I'm saying that not to put myself on a pedestal. I'm saying that because I know you heroes, there are many of you who didn't want to go to work every day, who were afraid to get COVID, but your courage kept this county going through. And so from my heart to you, I know just how much of a hero you are, and I thank you on behalf of Poperty family. I also have to thank the Delaware Trade Council, the Delaware Trade Council, our unions who earlier this year have endorsed me for this race. I'm very proud to be the voice of our unions in this race, and I won't let you down. I also have to say thank you to the members of our county council. I believe we have all-stars as Democrats on our county council. Thank you. Many are watching tonight. Thank you for the way that you boosted me, the way you have advised me, because you know, if I should make it, I'm not coming in to be a boss, to lord it over everyone of what I want to do. You know very well that should I get there, I will be a president of accountability. And that's a big mantra for me, because if you look at my career as an attorney, as the register of wills, as the person who generated $2.5 million in found money for Newcastle County, as a teacher, and as a lawyer-soldier. If you look at my career, my mantra has been accountability. So how will I be that accountable president of council? Two ways. First of all, for every developer, for every landowner who comes in front of council and says, "They want us to change a law. They want to change a zoning law. They want to build something in our county." As president, I'm going to be looking them in the eye and saying, "You can build it." But are the people of this county going to be building it? Are our hands, the hands that live here, going to be building that building and working in that building? And I'm going to make them accountable on their promises so that if it's built in this county, it's going to be built with our hands. And on the other side of accountability, I'm about inclusion. That's what my career speaks to, and accountability of inclusion. And nothing is going to be voted on in front of council until we hear from all sides and all voices. And if you look at my career, I've been speaking for those who normally aren't at the table. I speak for the artists. The art community has often been disenfranchised. I speak for our seniors. I wrote the Seniors Bill of Rights, perhaps a highlight in my career. I speak for those who have been in trouble with the law. Of course, I'm the president of the Delaware Pardon Initiative, and we want to help those who have messed up clean up what they've messed up and get that expungement. I speak for those going through breast cancer, especially in our African-American community. I'm the president of the Delaware Breast Cancer Coalition. And finally, I'm going to speak for those in Middletown, Odessa, and Townsend. You know, when I became the register of wills 10 years ago, I created...
Okay.
All right, fine.
I will be the president of accountability.
Three.
Thank you. Thank you, Cyril.
All right.
Fantastic. That clears our stuff. One more thing, Yolanda. Are they able to see your time?
I'm hoping so. I'm putting them up. Is everyone able to see your time? I think they've been adhering to it. They've been very, very patient and very, very nice about it.
Good, fantastic.
I'm about to lock this webinar. Mr. Moderator, this webinar is now being locked.
All right, everybody's in that's supposed to be in. All right, thank you. All right, so the first thing that we're going to do right now is the question that I actually asked Brian. And Brian, I'm going to bring back that question for you again, okay? Brian? All right. Okay. Right. Hello?
I'm getting there.
Okay, thank you. Brian, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, excellent. So we're going to give you a chance to answer that question. Scott, I had to stop it and go back into our routine that we were in. So first thing I'm going to, first for all the candidates, where do you stand on county government ethics and how do you work, how would you work to improve what we are doing?
Well, that is a subject, Mr. Muhammad, that I'm really passionate about, is ethics, government ethics. And we have to look at what ethics really means, means to do no harm. So we need to look at each and every situation as it happens. And if we're not sure about it, always take it to the ethics board and advise the ethics attorney of what this situation is. Just because it's good or nice or bad or evil, it doesn't matter, but the thing is, it has to be ethical. It has, so I would take the ethics opinion to the council, and I want to have a transparent meeting in front of the open public about the ethical issues that Newcastle County faces. I would like also to have public opinion about the ethical issues that become before the public and then run a decision on a vote or bring back the issues or findings back to council. Thank you very much and have an excellent...
Thank you. All right, at this particular point in time, I can't even see, thank you again, Brian, this particular point, I can't even see whether it's two minutes or not. So I'm co-host, and I'm hoping that you're keeping them on track. Next up, on the same question, where do you stand on the county government ethics and how you would approve the work that they are doing, is Ms. Monique Johns.
No. Karen Hartley-Nagle is next.
Sorry, Karen, you're next, sorry.
I was going to go with it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, last summer, I had contacted Julie Sebring, and I was doing, who is the attorney for the Ethics Commission, does a good job. And I had been researching and going through what they're doing, because we always want to update and stay up to date, what they're doing nationally regarding ethics and different ethics commissions. Are we doing similar things? Is there things we can do better? So I brought some of those things to her attention, and I believe they're working on some rules now. And hopefully, Julie takes on a few of those things that I brought up. But the one thing that I want to talk about, that I've been working on the last year, and the reason it's been a year and it's taking so long is because I can't get the information from the executive side. So I've been asking for information on the finances and everything we spend on NCTV because we want to expand that, and I've started legislation. Our council to council is working on it, but we're waiting for some final, some details that we need in order to complete it. And what I'm asking for, because Newcastle County TV encompasses everyone, we want to make sure every department, every row office, the ethics commission, everyone has a slot and can educate the public, because the public needs information and wants that. They want to hear from us directly, not through the county executive. And so I want to make sure everybody is heard, including the Ethics Commission, where they can speak for themselves and directly connect to the public. I think that's very important to do, and I'm hoping for the support to enact that.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, now we're rolling now. So now I got it. Ms. Monique Johns, I'll give you the same question. Where do you stand on county government ethics and how would you improve the work they are doing?
Go back, Monique.
Monique is lost again?
No, no. I had her muted. I need her to unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Let me do it myself.
Great. I think it's important that we continue to have public participation, and when we have challenges, that we bring them before the council that may just not be the sole communications. And ethic begins at the top, and we must create a culture, ethnical behavior. And many times, the puppet doesn't know until we're at court or it's in the newspaper. So it's important that we continue to keep the communication from the top to the bottom so everyone knows what's going on, so when there's challenges, we can handle them as they come, just like Brian says, each situation is different. So that's important. People need to feel like they are part of the decision-making and decisions in general. Let's remember that. We work for the people, and it's important for us to make sure that their voices are heard. Accountability is important. We need accountability from the top, in the middle, and the bottom. And that's where we're missing, is no accountability. Everyone works for themselves. We're not working together as a community. So we have to be accountable to one another. Thank you. Unmute yourself, sir.
I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted. We're getting phone calls. Can you believe that? We're getting phone calls with questions. Can you believe that, on the landline? So the next is Mr. Cyril Poperty. I'm going to read the question again for you. And the question is, where do you stand on the county government ethics and how would you improve the work that they are doing? Two minutes.
Well, friends, let me be very clear. Tonight, I am running for president of council to restore an ethical culture, integrity, and honesty to the position. Make no mistake about it. I like the fact that we started off with ethics. Because frankly, I think about ethics every day. I think about ethics as the register of wills as a county official. I think about ethics as an attorney. I took an oath to that profession. And I think about ethics as a lawyer soldier and the oath that I took there. And I promise you that as president, I will bring that same level of accountability and the same level of thought in terms of ethics to the position. You know, I teach ethics. And one of the things I talk about is the fact that here in Delaware, we generally, not just talking council, we generally have a problem. And we have a problem because too often, integrity, doing the right thing, is trumped by loyalty. Yes, because we all know each other, because we're in a fishbowl. What happens is, is that when somebody's doing something wrong, we tend to look the other way. We tend to not pull that person out. And we don't do it because we know that person, we went to high school with that person. That person is related to our wife's cousin, or we just know them from the supermarket or kids' games. And too often, because we have that familiarity, when something is going wrong, we look the other way. We don't hold ourselves and others accountable. Well, I can't afford to look the other way. I can't afford to look the other way as a public official, as an attorney, or as a soldier. So I have the confidence to know, having been tested many times, that as council president, Monique, as you beautifully said moments ago, it's time to create a culture of ethics and a culture of accountability.
All right, all right, thank you so much, Zero. Thank you so much. Ah, Lord, my email here is blowing up like crazy, man. People are just sending all sorts of stuff here. All right, so that was a great, thank you for that round one. So now we're going to go into our round two. And this question is going to start with Karen Hartley Nagel. Karen, are you there?
Hold on. Okay, Karen.
All right, Karen, are you there?
I am here.
All right, for everyone, y'all can listen to the question. The question is, do you support police review boards and body cameras? Why or why not? Two minutes.
Yes, I do. And I've supported body cameras since I was running in 2015. And then the then-police chief was talking about it and then put body cameras in place. And one of the things he always said was it keeps people honest on both sides of the camera. And I wholeheartedly support it, will continue to support it. Newcastle County already does it, and they do a great job of doing this, and as well as review boards. I always and have welcomed the community to come in and also to participate.
All right, thank you. All right, second is Monique Johns. I will give you the same question. Do you support police review boards and body cameras? Why or why not?
Make sure I can see myself here, okay. Absolutely, can you hear me? Absolutely, I support body cam. You know, it's important that we hold our police officers accountable. Yes, they're doing an awesome job protecting us. But they need to be accountable for the things that they do that are not according to what they were trained to do. And they were trained to protect us, not to kill us. So it's important that, you know, we have those body cams, just like the incident in Kentucky where they turned it off. That's unacceptable. What happens is, when we have the cam, the cams, the cameras, it makes sure that each officer remembers why they're there and what they're supposed to be doing. Accountability is the key. Just last evening, we were at the Newcastle County Police and we were praying for our Newcastle County Police. And it was such an awesome experience to see all the clergy, the churches, the police were there. We were on one accord and unified, praying for one another. It's important, I'm going to say it one more time. Because of what's going on right now currently, in the atmosphere, in the climate, we must, we must hold the police accountable, although they need sensitivity training. So as Newcastle County President, that's one thing that I'm going to implement, is they have training, because they have a lot of training. However, they don't have enough training. I think my time is up, but thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, timekeeper up there. As you can tell, I'm downstairs and Yolanda's upstairs. All right, all right, next up, second, next up is going to be Zero Poperty. I'm going to give you the question, Zero. Do you support police review boards and body cameras? Why or why not?
The answer is absolutely. I support anything that will do two things. First of all, make our police more accountable. But at the same time, increase the trust that we, the public, have in the police when they're doing an outstanding job. So those two measures, I believe, are win-win. They make things transparent, they make things accountable, yet they build trust in the system. As president, though, I want to take things a step further. I want to make sure that our rules of force are actually made into law. So that we have a transparent procedure when an officer goes out to an incident. And the rules of force actually need to call for de-escalation. We have an administrative policy now that emphasizes de-escalation. And I want to make sure we turn that into law. I know quite a few things about de-escalation. It's an area of law and an area of tactic that I've worked on with the Army Delaware National Guard. So I have a lot of confidence there. And I have a lot of confidence that that's so important and so important to codify. On the other side, we need to support our behavioral health unit. We can't arrest our way out of the opioid epidemic. And we certainly shouldn't be arresting those who are suffering from mental health. And those are just as important components. We need to bolster our behavioral health, we need to involve the community. We need to wrap our arms around the fact that we can't arrest our way out of addiction or mental health. It needs community, it needs holistic response. And it needs building a win-win solution that again, makes the process policing transparent, but at the same time instills confidence in the public on our outstanding force.
All right, thank you. Before we go to Brian, Brian, you're going to be on this particular round, you're going to be the last one. Before we go to Brian, we will allow some people to come in right now, some late Johnny's, Yolanda. Do you have anybody in the waiting room?
Yes, there's a couple of people in the waiting area, but they need you to go in and approve that to get in.
All right, I have approved everyone, so if they're not in right now, this is the last one.
Yes, I see them in now, I see a couple of names that I recognize now that were waiting. Yeah, so, and I'm going to lock this down, just letting everyone know that we are not, there's no chat on here. And go forward. And you also have your other panelists in when you're ready for them to ask their question.
All right, and here's the last of this round. This goes to you, Brian, the same question. Do you support police review boards and body cameras? Why or why not? Two minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mohammed. I absolutely do support police cameras and review boards. The review boards will, one, give civilian oversight, a review of the peers, ensure that the rules and regulations are complied to, hear from all sides of the story, and render a legal opinion. And also that if there's any claims or appeals that are rendered, it should be heard. Secondly, on the second part of the question is, I believe that body cameras are important because it would, one, document the current situation, keep the standards and compliance of the police, review the situation for later use, and keep the police accountable. I am for the police. But however, when it comes to government, we need to call all county servants accountable. And to have justice for the people that they are encountering. That's a really great question.
Thank you, well, thank you again, Brian. All right, so we've gotten rid of round two. So now we're on to our round three. Now, I have to say that that last question was given to us by one of our Lappa TV's great producers, Mr. Charles Potter Jr. from The Bottom Line. So thank you, Charles, for that question. The next question that we have is for heavy industry. We're going to be going into some land use questions. And the first person that's going to start off that question is going to be Monique Johns on this round. So where do you stand on heavy industry near residential communities?
Hey, Monique, there you go, unmute yourself. Can you repeat the question for me, please?
All right, the question is, where do you stand on heavy industry, new heavy industry? That's actually what they said. New heavy industry located near residential neighborhoods.
If it doesn't benefit the entire community, they should not be there. If it's industrial, for example, with high chemical smells and things of that nature that will hurt and harm our community, they should not be there. If they're there to uplift and to bring the economy up and businesses, I have no problem with that. But many times, is they are allowing these plants to come into the communities with low income and they're affecting our health, affecting our health of the ones that are low income. So it's important that we, as a community, come together and make sure we do not allow people or industries or companies to come into our communities unless it benefits our community. And we need to stop it. And as president, Newcastle County Council President, I will make sure that that does not happen.
All right. Thank you, Monique Johns. Thank you, Ms. Monique Johns, Mrs. Monique Johns, that's fantastic. Now, the same question I'm going to ask you, Mr. Zero Poperty. Where do you stand on heavy industry near residential communities?
What I want to first thank the Civic League, because I know they and other concerned citizens have been raising this question to council. You know, in other words, how do we make decisions of business versus the community? And when I look at that as president, whether it's in industrial areas, whether it's historic preservation, or simple development across the board, I'm looking at it through two lenses. First of all, Monique, agree with you again. We've got to make sure that the community has a voice. And guess what, the community is not all going to agree. But we have to make sure they have a voice and a place at the table to be heard. So they know when council makes a decision, at least they were heard. The second thing, and I mention this not only in industrial use, but in historic preservation, in building in general, anyone who is seeking to build or develop that comes in front of council is going to get a hard question from you. Have you talked with the trade labor unions? And is what we're developing, what we're building, going to be done by Delaware hands, by Newcastle County hands? And if the answers are, I don't know, that project's not happening. We have to involve the community on decision-making. And if we are going to build something, then we have to involve the community to actually build it and work there. They're sort of twins that go together. So I get, I thank the Civic League and other citizens for continuing to raise this point and making council aware that, hey, we shouldn't just be rushing in to any development project without making sure that it's responsible and making sure that what's being promised is actually going to be delivered.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next we have Mr. Brian Whitaker. The question is, where do you stand on heavy industry near residential communities?
Mr. Mohammed, that is one of the best questions that you're asked. One of the things I would like to do is to bring the issue to OSHA to see if there's any occupational health hazards. What are the hazards to the community? And then engage with the building inspector and ensure that the legal council is sure what's going on, to be sure that the building codes are being enforced and also the hazard materials code is being enforced too. I would want to expect and address the chemicals, spills, or hazards. Praying this to the attention, put this on the agenda, and praying this to the attention of the public for public comment. I will grill and examine all the documents that the buildings and distributors are doing to make the development and disclose what kind of chemicals and materials that they're using. And lastly, that I want transparency, not only from the people that are building the heavy, with the materials that are hazardous, but also transparency from the council and the government to bring a force to the community of what's going on. Because that's all about, it's the people.
All right, thank you, Brian. All right, and last but not least, Ms. Karen Hartley Nagel. Where do you stand for heavy industry near residential communities? Is she's on mute?
It's unmuted.
All right, do you want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Where do you stand on heavy industry near residential communities?
Well, as county council president, I have a strong record on addressing those issues where we have heavy industry near residential communities. One would be the landfill, where I voted against raising the landfill. But not only did I vote against it, before that, I spoke to everybody you could possibly speak up to on this issue, including, you and I had conversations, Jucky, on this, on where I stood. I went out into the community and I drove up and down the streets to see how close it was, spoke to some of the residents to see where they stood on it, how it affected them, their health, their breathing, many other issues. I looked into the water issue, and actually, the water quality is not the issue, although that was publicized. That was not, and it was going to, it would have had the council's support. Either way, not about the water issue, but really about the social justice issue. The, that they had a landfill with trash that was covering the community, blowing around, that they had the smell from it. There was a whole host of other issues that really surrounded this. And connected with the community, have them come in and talk, call them back through emails, you know, I addressed that one. But you know, that's not the only one. There are many of these kinds of issues, you know, in the Newcastle County communities. And in every time, you will see me vote with the people on this and addressing these issues, being vocal about it, talking about it. And I want to address, you know, some of the things, Mr. Poperty, you had spoken about that you want the people to build things here in Delaware, you're supportive of the trades. Why voted for the trades? The union's 100% of the time. I really support them and our people. But I want you to realize that many of the people that come in and build the things in Newcastle County for the unions, they're coming from out of state, they're coming from Pennsylvania, from New Jersey, and other states. So you should know that and have that knowledge when you're talking about making sure that we're building within Delaware. Because I want to make sure we see that. I also make sure that I see that when I go and visit the nuclear power plant in Salem. And I ask them, are you using union members? And they are going to be hiring more electricians over there. And make sure that when we go place to place, are you using unions? When there's new jobs, developments coming in, and I'm speaking to developers' attorneys, I'm asking them, are you using union? And who have you spoken to? And they let me know that. And they'll let you know how much of the union they're going to have working for those things. So I think you have to update yourself just a little bit more. So I think you have to update yourself just a little bit more on the, what the unions do and how they work within the county.
All right. Thank you. At this particular point in time, we have some other people that may want to get in that just gave me a ring over here. So, do we have any people that's in the waiting room at this time, Yolanda? You have to unmute yourself.
And they should be able to get in now if they're on, if they're in the waiting room. We'll just move on. You have your other panelists waiting to ask your question too.
All right. I think we've finished with round three. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we're finished. We're finished with round three. At, at this particular time, if Ms. Shawna Adams is on, we have some of our executive board from Lappa TV that are now in the room with us. They should be here. We just want to acknowledge all of those great producers on Lappa TV that's been there for so many years and giving you so much great programming. Again, this is sponsored by Lappa TV. And I just want to be on behalf of Lappa TV, I want to welcome you again. So now we're going to our fourth round. The fourth round is going to be a question that was given to us from some people who want to preserve the historical sites that are in Newcastle. So the question is, how do we preserve these historical sites in Newcastle? So Monique Johns started the last one. So Mr. Cyril Poperty, you're up first.
Well, I absolutely believe that we need historic preservation. I absolutely believe that we need open land preservation. And I absolutely believe that we need to help our farmers keep their farmlands and keep those farmlands undeveloped. So historic preservation, open land preservation, farmland preservation, very important to me, not just today, very important to me in terms of my career. How we do so, I think the question is, is when we receive promises from developers, and that's an issue coming up in the MOT area, when we receive promises from developers that they will, in fact, deal with and take a structure and preserve it historically. You know, how do we make them accountable to actually do it? And, and I promise, because it's not just an empty promise now, but based on my career, given my legal career and given my role as a registered wills, I know how to make those accountable for the promises that they give government. So that's the first thing. We actually need historic preservation. But at the same time, for those who are going to promise us, like the developers are going to do it, we need to make them accountable in a legal way. It's absolutely doable. We just need leadership from the top that when those developers come in and say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to preserve this in a historic way, we need a council president says, okay, you put in writing and we're going to make you accountable for it. All right. Now, just taking a step back, one of the things we haven't talked tonight that ties into this are the arts. As council president, I'm going to lead the charge for an arts commission. And that ties in with preservation, because I have to tell you folks, we have a desert, we have a dearth of public art in this county. It's time that we had more public art that's inclusive, diverse folks in this county. So historic preservation in conjunction with our public art.
Thank you. Thank you, Cyril. Thank you so much. All right. That was fantastic. Now, the rest of the panelists, do you mind if I call you by your first name? Is it all right? All right. Good. Thank you. So right now, the same question is, next up is Brian. Brian, how do you feel, how do you, how are you going to go to preserve historical sites in Newcastle?
Well, Mr. Mohammed, I really appreciate that question because I am from the first state and the first capital, which I'm a part of Historic Newcastle. And I'm all about historic preservation. I would like, as elected as Newcastle County Council President, is to have the council and Ivy search grants to preserve and have the money for the historic preservation. Put this on the agenda, let it for a public comment and review, put it on the meeting minutes. Also, I would to keep have what the city of Newcastle has, a historic society commission. Different boards and commissions to make sure that the fixtures in the property or colonial style or whatever era that we're aiming for. As some of grassroots communities, like for instance, I am proudly a member of the Aristotle Gardening Club who takes care of the historic gardens where George Washington and Governor Van Dyke had lived and, and people have visited. Other houses, the George Reed House, wonderful, beautiful gardens. I'm all about historic preservation. I would to assemble and gavenize as Newcastle County President. And moreover, get the public opinion, put it on the meeting minutes and preserve the wonderful rich history that Newcastle County in the city of Newcastle has and all the other cities within the county. Thank you for such a wonderful question.
All right. Thank, thank you, Brian. All right. All right. So now we're going to Karen. So Karen, I'm giving you the same, how are you, how would you preserve the historical sites in Newcastle?
Well, as county council president, I already work on that and it's very important to me. I work with one, my councilwoman, Dee Durham, who is very strong on this and actually has to vote at the last meeting to actually strengthen this area. But you, we need to work with the historic review board. And they really, they work so hard to try to, to address the historic properties throughout the county, working with them. Because you can't do it all on your own. And, you know, Mr. Poperty had said that he's, as a council president, he'll put it in writing. Well, they already do put it in writing. When developer comes in and there's a historic property, it has to go through the review process, through the planning board, through land dues. And oftentimes they will address that. And so it's in writing before it even gets to us, if it's an issue. We can also, you know, amend any legislation that comes before us. And I've done that as a floor amendment before in order to address anything that is not addressed. I also have worked with the farmers and have been working very hard with them in order to preserve their properties for a number of issues. And they have been having a very hard time. So I've been working with all of them as a group. And I want you to know that in Newcastle County, this is a great fact. In the world, there's only 2% of the world's soil that is considered exceptionally good. And we are one of the spots in Newcastle County that has that. It's called the levels. And the levels, the soil there, we are building over it in Southern Newcastle County. We want to save that, those pieces of land, and there's not much left, that still has that really rich soil and not pave over it. Because this is something that is so special. Should we ever want to, we need to grow our own food. We have a pandemic here. We don't know what the future holds. So we and, we and, you know, people in the community that I'm working with are doing more in, able, in order to be able to preserve that.
All right. Thank you, Karen. And now we have Ms. Monique Johns. And the question is, how do you, how would you preserve historical sites in Newcastle?
Hello again. This is so dear to my heart. I live around farmers. And I spent my entire life, my great grandfather had a farm, and I remember farming with him and I remember how important it was to him and to our family. And first, we must do everything we can to honor our culture. Number two, we must hold the developers responsible and accountable for what they promised prior to us selling them the land. So we have to come together as a team to make sure that they hold the other end of the, well, the bargain, they, that they do what they said they were going to do. How about that? Thirdly, our children need to be, they need to know our history. They need to know our history. They need to see what farmers have done, what they have accomplished. Farmers currently have to give up farming because they're not making enough money and their children don't want to farm. Four, I live in MOT, Middletown, Desta Towns End. I've been fighting and fighting for our farmers to preserve their land, save their hands. And if you look at a farmer's hands, you could see all the work and the time they put in and, you know, developing and, you know, seeding for us, for our fruits and our vegetables. We have to get back to what's important. We have to preserve the land legacy for our children.
All right. Thank you so much, Monique. So at this particular point in time, we've got some questions on why another candidate wasn't here. And I have to tell you that Aja was invited to the debate tonight. But at 10:45, her campaign manager said that she would not be able to make it. So I know we had some, some questions on the chat and I have some here over here about that. So that's the only reason why she's not here tonight. We are almost on the hour. We're going to give it just one more round and then we're going to do a real quick round. So before we do that, I think our timekeeper has, ah, yeah, thank you. Oh, man. Wow. This was a great question. I'm actually going to move this. Thank you, Yolanda. I'm actually going to move this up to the, to the top here. All right. This question is from Ms. Josie Roy. And the question is, and we're in round number five. So Brian, you are going to start this one. Are you willing to be the sole vote when you know it's the right thing to do and the rest of the council is voting another way? This is for you, Brian.
Mr. Mohammed, that is an excellent question. When I was appointed by Governor Merkel to serve on the board for audiology, speech pricety, inherited dispensaries, there were times when I know deep down inside that when I voted on the board that nobody else would vote, I will raise my hand and I say yay. And it was on record. Because if I strongly believe in my convictions, that's what I would like to do if elected to be Newcastle County Council President. Just because everyone has a particular way of thinking, as a leader, I need not to be influenced by anybody's thinking, but my own. And what is good for all members of Newcastle County. And in this case, the board, it was all of Delaware with that particular medical board that I was appointed to. And it was a great place to have been to. Thank you very much, Mr. Mohammed. And I always will vote my conscience, even though that nobody else would agree with me. Because I am the candidate of choice. Thank you very much.
I'm unmuted, but I can't hear anything.
Did you hear me?
No, I just.
Oh, this is, this one is for Karen. Karen?
Yes.
Do I need to repeat it?
If you want to repeat it so everybody hears it.
Sure. Are you willing to be the sole vote when you know it's the right thing to do and the rest of the council is voting another way?
Yes. And I can say I've done this a number of times. As the county council president, you have to lead and you have to vote the way, the way, the right way, based on where the, what the facts are and the information you have. And, and it's very difficult oftentimes for other council members to do that. And for example, I will give you one, which was recent, the Delaware Board of Trade. I voted differently. I did a great deal of research. I did not believe that we should be supporting the stock swap. It was not in our best interest for a whole bunch of reasons. In addition to one being that it wasn't legal for us to do that, to take, to take stock. But there was a whole other, a bunch of other reasons, such as the, what was being asked that we give up as far as our legal rights. It was not in our best interest and we needed to retain those legal rights. So I voted alone. I gave all the reasons why I should, why they should support me. And in the end, the, although one of Mr. Meyer's attorneys had said that no matter what, they were going forward with it, they decided not to. And so Matt did, we did not do the stock swap. It was in the best interest of the county to do that. And that was brought by standing alone. And I can tell you, the council was really surprised that Matt switches his position. But when you do your research and you lay out why you're voting the way you are, you lay out the facts, you lay out the law, oftentimes you can, you can change things, even if you stand by yourself.
All right. Thank you so much. The next question, the same question is going to you, Ms. Monique Johns, since we jumped the gun. Here we go. Are you willing to be the sole vote when you know it's the right thing to do and the rest of the council is voting another way? Again, that question was given to us by Ms. Josie Roy, from Out and About with Josie Roy on Lappa TV Comcast 190.
Hello, Josie. Thank you for your question. Absolutely. A leader must lead. A leader must have courage. Remember Steve Jobs, we all know him. He changed the culture of our nation. I, what, Apple, iPhone, i, iPad. In the face of diversity, in the face of disagreement, you have to stand up for what you believe. And I'm a Christian and I've made a vow that I am, I want to go see Jesus. So I want to make sure that my conscience is clear, that I am not going to allow anyone else's opinion of what I believe to interfere with what I'm supposed to do. It's timeout for voting against what we really believe and we go home and we really don't believe it. We have to stand up. We have to speak out. We have to be the example. And we have to listen to the voters. Remember, a leader must lead and have courage. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Cyril Poperty. The question goes to you. Are you willing to be the sole vote when you know it's the right thing to do and the rest of the council is voting another way? Mr. Poperty?
Well, first I want to say to Josie Roy who asked this question, thank you, Josie, because as you know, for much of the past 12 years, I, I've been the vice chair of the County Democratic Party. I love the Democratic Party. And the reason I mention this is that, Josie, we worked together on the County Democratic Party. And I learned the value of dissent, of you speaking out at those meetings. And I appreciate our discussions at those county democratic meetings. Of course, I am going to vote my conscience. To do otherwise would be to deny what my parents taught me at a very early age. Do the right thing and let the chips fall where they may. I've never been afraid, never have been afraid to do the right thing. But I want to turn this question for a moment. I want to turn it. Because we have an all-star democratic crew on county council. I admire the Democrats on county council. And we have all the one seat. And the reason I say that, if you're about leadership, if you're about leading from county council, county council presidency, if it comes down to you against council, against fellow Democrats, it's already a defeat. As council president, you would need to, as, as we've heard, lead. That means working across agendas. That means talking, discussing. And I'll never let it get to a point. I'll never let it get to a point where I've given up the leadership. I've given up saying, hey, we need to get together on this point so you understand my perspective and I understand yours. That's what the role of council president is. It's not bullying. It's not being the boss. It is melding and working together with our all-stars, our democratic all-stars and making sure we're on the same page. So I'm not afraid to vote my conscience, but at the same point, remember what we're talking about. We're talking about a group of fellow Democrats. And from the council position, you need to lead, not undermine.
It's open and you're on mute.
All right, thank you so much. It is open, it is, uh, there were some other people that wanted to get in, people coming in at seven o'clock when we started at six. Thank you, great candidates, y'all started on time. Other people were getting in at seven and a little bit later. So, now you're on, we're on to our round six, and round six is gonna be a great question. Uh, we've had nothing but, the, the first five questions covered a gambit of what we find here in Newcastle County and across the country. This, this next one is going to be specific to a region in Newcastle County. Our sixth, on our sixth round, is gonna be sewer and infrastructure issues below the canal. How do you feel about it? So, we're gonna start with the count, Karen Hartley Nagel. How do you feel about the sewer and infrastructure issues below the canal?
Well, that is an interesting question, and it is complex in that we have a comprehensive plan. Um, there is, some people would like to go in one direction, some people like to go in another. There were also some lawsuits that give some farmers the rights to have sewer. And, and there's also, you know, another issue with, you know, supposedly an agenda going on where certain developers will profit, um, from where the sewer goes. And so, I think over the next, and we need to deal with the facts, and we need to be very thoughtful about this and make sure it's about the best plan and it's not about certain people. Um, so I think that as we move forward with this, I'd like to see where we are with that and before taking, deciding, because we won't ultimately decide where the sewers are. We can, we can recommend, we can ask, we can not approve, but you need seven votes, right? So, um, but I will be fighting for those people that already have the right, legal right to put sewer in. And I think that they have been asked to wait much too long for this. It has been delayed and delayed and delayed again, and I really feel for those individuals.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, the same question is going to go to, uh, Monique Johns. Monique, are you there?
Yes.
All right, how do you feel about sewer and infrastructure issues below the canal?
Well, I live below, below the canal, so we're talking about MOT, the best place to live, absolutely. I love smart growth infrastructure as long as we have, uh, more schools to accommodate the infrastructure. Now, again, we need to hold the developers accountable, but we need sewer. You know, here in Middletown, we've created such a great community, we've developed more businesses, we have economic growth, we have so many entrepreneurs now. This has been a great, great, great thing to do, but we need to hold the developers accountable, and we need to make sure that we have sewer. No one knows it like me, no one on the panel lives here but me. So, I, I think, so I know that it's important, um, for us to continue to make sure that we have everything we need to make sure our children, our children don't experience anything um, outside of what we're expecting. The residents, as the residents, we have the right, and we have complained enough. Now, it's time to get someone in the position who can make it happen. Stop saying that you've been working and doing all, I've been here and I'm still waiting. So, you know, I have some challenges as well, but we need someone in the position to pull the plug, do whatever needs to be done to make it happen here at MOT.
All right, thank you so much. All right, the same question, Mr. Poperty. The question comes to you. How do you feel about sewer and infrastructure issues below the canal?
Well, this question really strikes to why I'm running for president of council. And by the way, Monique, I love your energy, I love your MOT energy, let's keep it up, I love it. Why I'm running for council involves accountability, and it involves making sure every voice is heard. And the reason this is so timely, the reason we're talking about MOT infrastructure, two things. First of all, we do have a number of different, uh, plans and ideas at the table. From an accountability perspective, I'm gonna ask everyone, what is in the best interest, long-term, of clean drinking water? We can't lose sight of the big picture. It's about clean drinking water, and any plan that we adopt has to be about clean drinking water. Now, there have been some, some folks in MOT who feel they've been disenfranchised because their voice hasn't been heard on this issue. Big shout out to my big brother, Joe Poperty. He is the president, or the executive director, I should say, of the Delaware Farm Bureau. Joe, great job on rallying the farmers and making sure that their voices were heard. And they, some farmers feel one way, some another way, but Joe, great job on making sure they were heard. As council president, I'm gonna make sure, gang, every voice is heard. Everyone has an opportunity to speak and say their piece before a decision is made. And once again, I'm gonna pivot this question just a bit. When we talk about infrastructure, we tend to think of sewers, roads, and sidewalks. Well, I also think about infrastructure in terms of Wi-Fi. What the pandemic has shown us, as if we already didn't know, is that there are disenfranchised communities, pockets in our county where you can't get Wi-Fi. I will say, if I should become the president, I'm gonna make sure that folks aren't disenfranchised by this very important infrastructure issue. That we're gonna make sure we have Wi-Fi throughout our county. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, I, I was gonna say something about the Wi-Fi because I had a conversation with the governor about Wi-Fi. I think some people heard it about Route Nine Carter, but, but I digress. Next, last one on here is Mr. Brian, Mr. Brian Whitaker. How do you feel about sewer and infrastructure issues below the canal?
Hello, Mr. Mohammed and the panel. I have to say that I am a fan of MOT. My brother works at the MOT school, he is a baseball coach. And my brother's been working for, and I have in-laws that live down there. So, let's discuss the issue at hand. Um, the sewer issue and felt by the canal, okay? I would like, if I was elected as city council president, I mean, county count, county council president, I would like to have water testing, have environmental inspections, hazardous waste inspections, make sure that the, there's a good review of the environmental laws being implemented. Be transparent, have city, have county, have county council meetings with exhibits, with the developers, with the people, with the sewers. I mean, let the public actually see what's going on. Let the public actually know what is going into their streams and waterways from the sewers. We need to hold the, the buildings, the people that make the buildings, the construction workers accountable, the companies. We need to protect the people. We need to make sure that they're living healthy. And I, if elected, I will like to be sure, to be transparent, have this documented, exhibits, the horn on yours for the public, and their public comment in this, because what they say is highly valued when it comes to their environment and sewer lines. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Well, listen, we're at the last question before we do our closing arguments. Now, uh, the last question that was given to us, was given to us about, by sixteen people at least wanted this answer. So, eh, they talked about the Board of Adjustments, they talked about the Land Use Board. More importantly, what they were talking about, well, what will you do to stop nepotism in county council government, in county council government? Nepotism and cronyism in county council government. So, we're gonna start with, and this is going to be the last one before we do our, uh, closing statements. We're going to start with Ms. Monique Johns. Ms. Monique Johns, what will you do to stop nepotism and cronyism in, in Newcastle government? Hello?
Question again, I'm sorry.
All right, like I said, we got, we had seventeen questions based upon this. Nepotism, they believe nepotism and cronyism is happening in Newcastle County government. They said, what will you do to stop nepotism and cronyism in Newcastle County government?
All right, we have to put, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, can you hear me?
Yes, we have to put rules in place and we have to hold them accountable. We can't back down, we have to stop giving excuses on why we allow these things to happen. We have to stop it now. In order for us to move forward and build as a team, we have to hold each other accountable, and we have to call a spade a spade, and we have to call it out. It's the only way we're gonna get anything done.
All right, well, thank you, you was pretty quick, thank you so much. All right, so the, the next one, Mr. Cyril Poperty, do you need me to redo the question again?
Uh, yes, please.
How do you, how are you going to stop nepotism and cronyism in county council government since there's a lot of people that's saying that is what's going on?
Well, as I said earlier, anytime we see it, we need to not be afraid, not get into the Delaware way of putting loyalty over integrity, we need to call it out. But more so, and going to the question in specific, I'm gonna do exactly what I have done over the past ten years as your county register wills. I have an office of twenty people, twenty people that I try every day to treat with dignity and respect and honor their work. And the way that we have tackled it, real simple, real simple, we've hired some new people. We've opened doors for those who traditionally didn't have a door open. And we have prided ourselves on being diverse and being inclusive. And I, I say this with a lot of pride, gang, I will put my office and what we have done in terms of being inclusive, in terms of diversity against any government office, not just in Newcastle County, but any government office in the state of Delaware. And I'll, I'll give you two quick examples. First of all, as the register wills, we get to appoint a chief deputy, your right-hand person. I've had an opportunity to appoint two chief deputies, they've both been minority women. I opened a door where normally a door is closed, and it's been the greatest decisions I've ever made. Secondly, so many people of color, especially women of color, have come to me who are lawyers or who are in law school, and they say, Cyril, you know, I, I, for whatever reason, I can't get a job. And I say to them, you're gonna be a clerk, and the register wills starting on Monday. I'm gonna give you a chance to prove yourself so that when you get, when you go for that next job, they're gonna say, what are you doing? Oh, I'm working with Cyril Poperty at the register wills. Oh, you're working with Cyril, you must know something because Cyril wouldn't include you unless he was going to help you to learn the law properly, to learn wills in states properly. So, just to this question, you know how we do it, gang? We become diverse and we become inclusive, and we call it out, we're gonna call it out. And this is exactly, I'm not promising, I'm just gonna do what I've done for ten years plus as the register wills.
All right, thank you, Mr. Poperty, thank you again. All right, and right now, we're, uh, Brian, I think you're up, you ready? How do we, how do we stop nepotism and cronyism in county, county government? All right?
Mr. Mohammed, how can we stop nepotism and cronyism in Newcastle County government? First, I will put it on the agenda. I'll open it up with the speak, if I'm, I'll open up with the speech if elected. I will let the council members discuss the issue. We will vote on the topic. I will read the letters from the public, council communications. I will hear what the public has to say from, from the audience. I would then take all the information that I've gathered, and I would like to vote on the issue and make a resolution, Mr. Mohammed, to HR. It's for HR to investigate the harm processes of Newcastle County Council Government. And lastly, I would like for HR to discuss with the management about nepotism and cronyism, have training sessions about this particular issue. And lastly, that I want everybody in Newcastle County government to have an equal opportunity regardless of their race, skin, sexual orientation, and where they're from, and what their last name is. Because Newcastle County is not supposed to represent a family or a friend, but the entire county. Thank you very much, Mr. Mohammed, for asking me that question, and that's, that's an issue that I'm dearly passionate about.
All right, thank you, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that passion, man.
You're welcome.
All right, now Karen, this is, you're gonna have the last question before we go into our closing, uh, uh, statements. How do, will you stop nepotism and cronyism in Newcastle County government?
Unmute yourself, Karen.
All right.
Okay, as president of county council right now, I would continue to do what I'm doing, is to address it. Um, some of the issues that recently came before us were as a vote for the county council employees, where the employees and with some members of council had come up with their job duties and their salary, and it seemed to be excessive. Um, and what I had asked for is an independent, um, group or, or a firm to come in, take a look at what those duties should be, what the salary is, compare it with the state, compare it with the city, and then we could, we can make a decision. Because when you don't do that, even if it is in line with what the city and state is, it's the appearance. It doesn't look like that, because you've got the people, the, the aides that are working for the council people that are friends, you're giving them a big salary increase, and it just looks bad. Though I, again, I was the only vote because it was the right thing to do, and I took a lot of heat for that vote. Um, it wasn't union, but you know, I still took a lot of heat for that vote. And it came down to someone's, a rel, someone worked in the county that, um, you know, they wanted to see other people get raises. And, um, that's not right, we should not be given the people's money, and you gotta remember this. This is OPM. Some people like to give out other people's money, it's not theirs. You gotta remember it when you're voting, it is not your money. This is the people, the taxpayers that work hard for that. And so, this is no place to be giving their money to your friends, to your relatives, because you want to, not because they've earned it, not because they have, have worked hard for it, you know? And those things can be true too, but they have to be based on criteria, and it is best done by an independent outside person.
All right, thank you, thank you so much, Karen. All right, so we have done seven rounds today, and we've done a lot of, uh, we went through a gambit from land use, zoning budget, what we've touched on budget, infrastructure building codes, more community service and, and ethics that we had. I don't think there's been a, a debate in Delaware that's, that's actually touched on ethics as much as we've touched on it tonight. I thank each one of the candidates for being here tonight and being part of the Lappa Debate 2020. We're looking to have another Lappa Debate for 2020 that's going to be with what's going on in our great city of Wilmington. So, if you have any, if any of the audience or any of the people that's out there, attendees, know a debate that you would like to do with Wilmington City Council, or debate on any district, please send it to me at B-Tom, that's B-T-H-O-M-P, six one six four at gmail dot com. All right, so now we're going to actually wrap up, and I thank y'all tonight because, yep, it's time for us to all go and get something to eat and have a good time. Uh, I thank each one of you for coming to be a part of this historic Lappa TV. Again, this is going to be in its entirety on some of our shows on Lappa TV, on Comcast Channel 190, uh, on our Great Sunday program. So, we'll have it on a lot of different shows. So, as we wrap up here, we have, each candidate will be given four minutes to say why they're the best candidate to be for county council president, Newcastle County Council President. And we're going to start, since we switched it around, we're gonna start with Mr. Cyril Poperty. So Mr. Cyril Poperty, get ready, give us your smi, and if you want to during that time to give the information on how people could donate or be a part of your campaign, you could give it within that four minutes. Mr. Cyril Poperty, go.
Well, I started by thanking Lappa and I want to end by thanking Lappa. Thank you so much for caring about this race. It is very important to me. And I thank you for elevating it and giving the community an opportunity to weigh in. It's important to me because I feel I'm running for all the right reasons. Number one, to bring, uh, trust and integrity and ethics back to the position of president. I'm running on the, on the platform of accountability to making those who come before council and ask us for changes to law, for changes to zoning, for permission to build. Make them accountable that if it's going to be built here, it's going to be built with Delaware hands and Delawareans are going to work in the buildings that are being constructed. And I'm also finally running on the idea of inclusiveness because that's what my career has been, to giving a voice to those traditionally disenfranchised in the process. We didn't talk tonight about much about seniors, but everyone knows that's where my heart is. Again, author of the Seniors Bill of Rights. I'm going to give a voice to the arts community, traditionally disenfranchised, to those who have a record and want to clean up what they messed up, to healthcare and those going through, for example, breast cancer. And finally, to parts of our county that are, again, traditionally disenfranchised from the Route nine corridor to the MOT community. I will make sure that every voice is heard because that's exactly what I've been doing through my professional career. I want to wrap up by saying, first of all, uh, to the candidates, I will say the Democratic candidates because that's my party. For tonight's debate, I want to make you all a promise that whoever wins this race and Adja, I know you couldn't make it, but you're included too, my friend. And whoever wins this race, and if it's not me, I will support that candidate unequivocally uh, in the general election and do everything I can to make sure that we have a Democrat elected county council president. And finally, finally, I have so many friends watching tonight or helped me get ready for this debate. I want to let you know, this is not my first primary. I've been in primaries before primaries within the Democratic Party can be difficult. We push and shove because you know what? We all know each other. We all know each other's friends. And we're all vying for the same small pool. I know it can be difficult. But I want to tell you, uh, this year, despite all the topsy-turvy nature, it's been very special for me. Very special for those who have, who have come out and said, Cyril, we want to make sure you get there. You know, one of my favorite movies is It's a Wonderful Life. You like, it's a wonderful, I love It's a Wonderful Life. And at the end of that movie, they tell the main character, no man is a failure who has friends. And by that measure, I have to tell you, Cyril Poperty is a very, very lucky man. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cyril Poperty. All right. Now we're going to go to Mr. Brian Whitaker, the only independent in the, in the race at this particular time. Mr. Brian Whitaker, let me give you, your shot for your final thoughts. You've got four minutes.
Yes, and, uh, Mr. Mohammed, this has been a wonderful experience. And I do thank Lappa and Mr. Siriyo. I really do appreciate Lappa and also the Democratic Party to allow me to, to answer the questions and for the voters to hear from their candidate, the candidate of choice from the Independent Party of Delaware. Madam President, it's an honor of meeting you. And I'm thankful that you heard wonderful things about me and the work of done in the city of Newcastle. And Monique, you're wonderful too. And that they tell me, your peeps tell me everything about you, which is great. I have to say this, that I had a wonderful experience and I thank everyone. But I have to say this in the bottom of my heart. I came out of the army with nothing. I have medals and awards and I had to really fight really hard to get back on my feet and to be independent. I had to study. I had to research. I help out people who have severe mental illnesses, people who have drug addiction. I own my own business, Whitaker's Business Enemies. I'm a veteran who got elected in the city of Newcastle, an independent that got appointed by the governor of Raquel to be on the medical board. I fight for local government and county government is local too. I am a leader. That's why I'm running. I have government experience under me, military experience. I gavenize the community to have the Rose Hill Community Garden, actually it's the Veterans Community Garden at Rose Hill. I reach out to all people. I include everyone. And that makes me your candidate of choice. In Syria, I have to say that you are an excellent person. And I'm glad that I've met you along the road and I'm glad that you're a fellow veteran too. And Monique, you got a wonderful smile. And I have to say this, that I'm a dedicated, motivated, energetic, civil servant. I represent your needs. If you write me a letter, I will like to respond to you quickly. And there's one thing that no one of the panelists have ever discussed. And that's human trafficking. And a part of my platform, one of the things I would like to do is to get rid of the human trafficking. The traffickers come through Baltimore, through Newcastle County, I ninety-five, they drop off nail salons and hair salons and restaurants and massage parlors. We take a blind look at what's going on. Slave men are supposed to be abolished. But yeah, I'm here to fight for the victims of sex crimes and other crimes. I'm for the police. I'm for the union and I'm for everybody, no matter what their race, creed, social orientation or whatever. But the bottom line is we got to look at the job at hand, set the agenda, reach out to party lines, gavenize the community, work hard, do the best, address the public comment, make the public meetings and the public comments. I will be your next leader for Newcastle County Council President. And I am the choice at Election Day. WWW.VOTEFORBRIANWHITAKER.COM is my website. Please go to it and see what I'm all about and email me at electbrianwhitaker@gmail.com. And please do not hesitate to give me a call and drop a donation. This has been a wonderful experience. And once again,
All right. Thank you so much, Brian. Thank you. All right. So at this particular time, with the closing statements, we have the Newcastle County Council President, uh, Ms. Karen Hartley Nagel. Go Karen.
Yes, I wanted to thank Lappa. Um, also, Jaqueen, thank you. Yolanda, thank you for your help tonight. Did a great job. And a big shout out to Josie Roy. Thank you, Josie, for everything you do. You do a great job in the community. Um, and in my closing statement, I'll be talking a lot about what I'm going to do throughout the county. But one of the things that's really important and close to my heart, because I'm getting thousands of emails in this last couple of weeks and I've made calls, anybody who has a phone number, I try to call and talk to them. And those phone calls are, and emails that I'm receiving, thousands of emails, are about the police and defunding the police. And on June twelfth, I held a webinar in response to that. Right away, um, county executive jumped in. We had the police chief on and who answered questions for two hours. And like many attending this Zoom webinar, I remain horrified by the senseless death of George Floyd with the actions of members of the Minneapolis Police Department. My thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends and the people and communities across the country who are demanding renewed focus on facial racial equality and policing. We recognize the importance of this dialogue as well as the responsibility we have as a county and community to take part in it, to listen to each other, to self-reflect, to recommit to actions that make Newcastle County a welcoming and inclusive community in dedication to serving those who live, play and visit Newcastle County. I am proud of our county, particularly now as we work together to address a global pandemic and the resulting economic crisis. And also proud that many in our community are moved by what happened by George to George Floyd and are seeking positive ways to respond. In turbulent times, reflection, education and listening can be keys to that positive change. Along with peaceful protests and constructive discussion across the community, we appreciate comments, questions and efforts to learn more about what the county is doing to maintain and grow a positive culture, to be accountable and to do our very best for every community member. Learning and working together is how Newcastle County is responding and as president, I'm responding to this moment and how we're going to respond to the current opportunity to improve support for diversity, inclusivity and equity across all count facets of our government and our community. Recent events make it clear, the mistrust, fear and pain people feel across our county and our country, we must pause and listen to each other. The county will continue a dialogue with the community through online and person-to-person discussion. And myself as the county, county council president, I will continue to make those phone calls and listen to you and return any calls and read all these emails, thousands of these emails. The ongoing history of structural and sustained racism is a fundamental and deeply distressing injustice here as elsewhere. Newcastle County will continue the work of addressing generations of racism and injustice of seeking ways to approach one another with respect and are building communities that are truly safe, supportive and inclusive of all. We're also taking the opportunity to review policies and processes across the organization to ensure they support a community that respects and values individual differences, addresses inequities and reflects and involves the community we serve. We are now working on legislation and will soon be voting on it to address these many issues. I want to continue to have a dialogue with people across the county. I thank the Democratic Party. Reach out to me. I'm always available and I'm asking.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Now, uh, before I do the, the last one, which is going to be Ms. Monique Johns, well, on behalf of Lappa TV and Executive Board, we'd like to thank everybody who participated. We would like to thank our president, Mr. Dwayne Adams. We'd like to thank our executive board. We'd like to thank Yolanda and give her that, doing a great job as, as a, uh, timekeeper and moderator because our camera went crazy. And at this point in time, we have Ms. Monique Johns with her last closing statement. Yeah, go take it away, Monique. Monique?
I'm going to unmute. There we go.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you so much, Lappa, for the opportunity, uh, for the community to hear, um, our platforms and hear our heart and make the choice, have the opportunity to make the choice unless, instead of someone else making the choice for them. So I thank Lappa for that. This pandemic has shifted my mind, uh, set my mindset and understanding in order to make change. You not only need to have a voice, but a seat at the table. With ninety-three hundred Delawareans still unemployed, seniors not being able to leave their homes, not even for a doctor's visit. People fearful of leaving their homes, not having enough food. An example, I've been feeding the homeless for the last three months, every single day, rain or shine, hot food, giving them tourer trees, giving, paying for motels, hotels. I just recently was in a, um, going to see homeless and I went in the woods. There was twenty-five families, twenty-five people rather, living in the woods. I was just done found it. Feces, they have a certain section for that. So when people, they shout out names on the panel that they're connected to, what they're doing, I don't know what they're doing because I'm out there every day and I don't see them serving the community. People living on wood as a bed. It broke my heart. We need change in the council. And I'm the change that's needed. We need a leader that will not just talk about what they're going to do, but do what they said they've been talking about. I'm a make it happen kind of person. I'm a woman. I am the woman as the Newcastle County Council President. I am the one. I am a reconciler. And I will get things done and I will make sure that people's voice will be heard. The definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing expecting different results. Newcastle County challenges will be resolved, will be solved, sorry, will be solved by the people who have created these problems in the first place. So we have to be careful. The choices is clear to me. The choice is clear. You can vote for people who were entrusted with these positions before to maintain a status quo and no major change will come to plight of the people who the county has responsible to serve. Or you can give me a chance and I will be the change that is needed for the county to become a more progressive county than actually serves its people and respects and dignity they deserve. I will be the voice for the voiceless. I will be the beacon of hope for those who have given up on their government because no one listens to them anymore. And I will be the change our county so deservedly needs. Leadership is a personal, it's personal. Leadership is personal. We have to listen to the people. So I encourage you all to go to my website, moniquejohns.com, join our team. I'm excited to serve you as I take that oath on that day. So thank you so much, Lappa. Thank you all that joined in tonight. I hope you enjoyed it. Vote for Monique Johns for the Newcastle County Council President twenty twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Monique Johns. Thank you to everybody who are participating. Thank you to the attendees that participated as well. We could not get to all of your questions, but we actually had a roundabout questions that were good for everyone. Well, this has been Jaqueem Mohammed from the Hard Talk with Jaqueem for Lappa TV Debates twenty twenty. We'd like to thank you for showing up. We also remind you, get out there and vote in the primaries and vote in the general election, September and November. Everybody have a good one. Wave, candidates.
Good night. Thank you all so much. Take care.